Good morning, and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of June 7th, 2022. If all will rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Moved to approve. Second. Moved in second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious. I just want at this point to acknowledge that we have the state representative Susan Ackman from, as part of Blue Earth County, and just to welcome you here and appreciate, I guess, your interest in Blue Earth County. Thank you.
I picked up a little more out of this.
There you go. Okay, at this point then, we will have Lisa Kautmaniski come up and discuss the year-end audit adjustment.
Good morning, Lisa.
Morning, Lisa.
Good morning. So today I'm here to talk about our audit. It's almost finished. We just have some cleanup items, which I need your approval. The audit went very, very well and very smooth this year, so that's always a good thing. The first thing we have is to approve the operating transfers for 2021. These were mostly approved when you approved the budget, but now they're like actual amounts, so we need approval on those.
I'll move approval of the operating transfers.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
The second item is to approve the following revenue and expenditure budget adjustments for 2021. The changes there are mainly due from the COVID ARFA funds, where we received over $6.5 million in 2021. And then the expenditure, the largest change there is also money that we had spent on those funds.
They moved to approve. Moved by Vance in second. Second by Kevin. Any? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
The last item is where we approve, again, the other financing sources and uses. These are for like bonding. You can see the biggest change there is for ditches. So we had budgeted that we were going to maybe bond, and then we didn't need to bond. And so we did an adjustment for that, to take that out.
I'll move approval for the budget adjustments.
Second. Vance. No questions, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
Thank you. We'll get the opinion letter from the auditors, Clifton Larson Allen, and then hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be posting our report on our website.
Great, thank you, Lisa.
Good job on the clean audit. Tell your staff thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And we have.
Craig.
Craig. And Ryan. Ryan. Bunch of things here.
You guys got a whole list of stuff for us to say.
Good morning. They're all short and simple though.
Yeah.
Morning. Short and sweet's good, especially when it comes to ditch hearings.
Yep.
Whenever you're ready, Craig.
Okay. First item is where is setting the hearing date for judicial ditch 14 improvement acceptance hearing. The engineer's acceptance report for this petitioned improvement has been received by the property and environmental resources department staff, and all contractual work has been completed by the contractor. Today, we're requesting that the Drainage Authority set a public hearing date of July 12th, 2022, for the acceptance hearing for the petitioned improvement work for portions of judicial ditch 14.
I'll move approval.
Second. Second by Kevin. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
Second item, this is setting the hearing date for judicial ditch 17 improvement acceptance hearing. The engineer's acceptance report for this petition improvement has been received by the property and environmental resources department staff, and all contractual work has been completed by the contractor. Today, we are requesting the Drainage Authority set a public hearing date of July 12th, 2022, for the acceptance hearing for the petitioned improvement work for portions of judicial ditch 17.
So moved. Second by Vance. Well, just hearing, no questions or anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
I believe I am up next.
Ryan.
I'm trying to set a hearing date for county ditch 46. So Blue Earth County ditch 46 originally exists in sections 9, 10, 11, 14, 15, and 16 of Mankato Township. County ditch 46 is also pretty much known as Madison Avenue at this point. A petition for transfer jurisdiction under Minnesota Statute 103E.812 was received by property and environmental resources department staff on April 8th from the city of Mankato. City of Mankato has also signed an agreement, and Charles J. Brandle with ISG has also delivered his engineer's transfer report. All the documents have been received by our property and environmental resources department staff. Today, I'm requesting the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a hearing date for the transfer of jurisdiction for county ditch 46 on July 12th.
Move to approve. My Vance.
Second.
Kip, second.
So what this, this basically moves it to the city of Mankato?
Correct.
Yep. So they have jurisdiction over the ditch.
Correct. So none of their stormwater MS4 things would conflict with our 103E drainage statute. It's a problem as a lot of those lots start to expand over towards like Freiburg's new place there. The stormwater issues and 103E conflicts, yeah, so.
Does the ditch still continue out towards?
It does. It goes almost to Javens.
It does. So it's still in the county?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, it's on the north side of the county road there.
So this would end at what point?
It would end just west of Javens is the closest way to tell you on the north side of the road.
So up to Javens, it's going to be?
Almost, yep, pretty close.
Consider city ditch?
Well, they're taking over the mainly the easements is what they're really taking over with a promise that they won't be cutting off anybody else's, anybody's drainage. But they're, they maintain the easements, and then they can maintain it as they see fit, rather than having to go through the hearing process every time they want to do something with the.
Makes perfect sense.
Yep.
I'm just, just trying to get it clear in my head as to exactly what it's going to be doing.
Well, we'll go over all of this at this hearing.
At the hearing, right. Yeah.
And then we're doing today is setting the.
Sure, I understand. Thank you.
Yep. My next one is.
We got a vote on it.
Oops, sorry.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious. Okay, no.
My next setting the hearing date is for county ditch 50. An engineer's acceptance report for this petition repair has been received by property and environmental resources department staff, that all contractual work has been completed by the contractor. Today, I'm requesting the Drainage Authority set a public hearing, date being July 12th, for the acceptance hearing for the petition repair work for county ditch 50.
So moved.
Second.
Kevin, second by Kip. County ditch 50 acceptance hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
It won't be as simple next time around.
Yeah.
As I seen all those dates on the same day, I thought, should we split these up? But we might as well just pull the Band-Aid off.
Those should be shortened.
Yeah, get them all done.
Okay. All right.
Hey, Scott.
Morning, Scott.
Morning, Scott, how are you?
Good.
Here to talk about the Cotton River One watershed.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. The One Watershed One Plan for the Cottonwood River watershed is just getting started, and they're going to be making an application later this week on that. And the planning area for the Cottonwood River watershed includes portions of the middle Minnesota River watershed and Blue Earth County. That would be the Little Cottonwood River watershed and Morgan Creek watershed in the northwestern part of the county. And there's a map in your packet for reference, but that area is just over 2.5% of the county. And because less than 10% of the county is in this planning area, we can opt out of the official One Watershed One Plan process, which would mean that we would not be on the policy committee or the steering committee. You know, we still could provide input on the technical advisory committee like a city would or in the public process. So if there's things like well sealing or other activities that we want to be included in the plan, we could still make that a priority. And to be eligible for implementation funds through One Watershed One Plan, we would still need to adopt the plan when the planning process is over with. And it's my understanding that the SWCD for Blue Earth County is also in the process of opting out of the official process. And due to the small area the county included in the Cottonwood River watershed, staff is recommending that we opt out of the official process, and we've included a resolution in the packet for your consideration, as well as the map of showing the area in the county that's in that part of the planning area.
Move to approve. Approved. By Vance, second.
Second.
Second by Kip. Any discussions on the plan?
I guess I would just comment, I can't believe Scott, you don't want another, two set, two meetings every month. But you know, Blue Earth County, we've talked about before, is a unique county with more miles of rivers than any other county. And with more miles of rivers, it's a lot of watersheds. I think we have five in Blue Earth County. We're very active, we've been active in the Wat'wan County watershed, or the Wat'wan One Watershed One Plan, which is pretty much done, but we're in the, in the midst of the Lassure One Watershed. You know, I serve on that policy committee. That's monthly meetings. Our staff is that, as well as the technical meetings and other things. And with just, you know, less than 3% of our total land, we've, we've got our staff run about us thin, and we're going to monthly meetings on the other watersheds. I would certainly support being engaged to the level we need to be in this, but we've got our plates full with our major watersheds in the county.
I would concur with that, Commissioner, and after the group we had the other day with the Lassure watershed, that's going to be very active, so.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we have the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious. All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Yeah, good job last Friday with that program. That was very informative.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, too.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Public Works, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A few things here.
Couple of action items and probably more, more even so for discussion, but we'll, we'll jump right in, and as always, please interject as we go if you've got questions or comments. So the first action item for consideration is the master partnership contract with the Minnesota Department of Transportation. This allows both agencies to interchange services and/or goods with each other, and if needed, also allows MNDOT if requested and authorized by the local agency to deliver small routine services. So we use this primarily for materials testing, lab services when they do construction materials and/or bridge bearings, and MNDOT staffs, staff to inspect bridge beams and things of that nature. So a lot of that falls under this agreement, so I would request approval of this updated Minnesota Master Partnership Contract number 1050058.
So moved. Second by Kip. Second by Vance. Okay. I understand, all those in favor of the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
All right, and there is a resolution also with these MNDOT agreements for consideration, authorizing the county board chairperson and the county administrator to execute the contract and amendments there, too, and authorizes myself to negotiate work, work order or contract, contracts with MNDOT under the master contract agreement.
Move to approve. Second by Vance, approve the contract. And is there a second?
Second.
By Kip, by Kevin. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
All right, and there is a resolution also with these MNDOT agreements for consideration, authorizing the county board chairperson and the county administrator to execute the contract and amendments there, too, and authorizes myself to negotiate work, work order or contract, contracts with MNDOT under the master contract agreement.
Move to approve. Second by Vance, approve the contract. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kip, by Kevin. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
All right. The second item is consideration of a state of Minnesota with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, lighting maintenance agreement number 1049631. This is for maintenance of the intersection lighting at the new R-Cut intersection at Minnesota Highway 14 and County State Highway 56 by the Casey's Gas Station in Eagle Lake. This is an extension of the existing agreement that we have in place, where the county is responsible for operation, maintenance, and electrical cost of the intersection lighting. However, it does provide for that MNDOT does a share of the intersection lighting maintenance, especially replacement of the luminaire heads, the lights, some of the ballast, some of the fuse boxes, control panel elements. And if a pole gets knocked down, MNDOT is also responsible for replacement of that. So it takes some of the heavy lifting off, we still pay for the electricity at the intersection. This is even a bit of a hybrid away from MNDOT's general policies, that they usually try to push the entirety of these lightning, intersection lighting agreements onto the locals. We've had pretty good luck of negotiating these back and forth with the state, and depending on who's initiating the project, generally ends up responsible for the intersection lighting. So, and again, this is an extension of an existing one, so the responsibilities have not changed and have not been shifted onto the county differently than it was before. So this is just an update because there's additional lighting with the R-Cuts.
I see they're adding some lights, so, which is good.
That's definitely one that needs good lighting.
Absolutely. Very dangerous.
I'll move approval.
Second by Kip.
Second.
Second by Vance. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the agreement say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
Okay, and the same thing within that agreement, there is another resolution authorizing the county board chairperson and the county administrator to execute that agreement. So I would request approval of that resolution within the packet.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor of that, approve, say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
Okay.
All right.
Last action item on our list is consideration of a cooperative construction agreement with independent school district number 2135. That'd be the Maple River School District for a stormwater management in Mapleton associated with County State at Highway 7. So as you may recall from past discussions, the school district, due to just site balancing and needing additional fill for earthwork on their site, overexcavated and made their ponds larger than were necessary. So they had extra stormwater treatment capacity within their ponds, and we needed a little bit of additional stormwater treatment capacity because of the widening of the road and the addition of the trail. So we talked with the school, and we're able to work out a, an agreement where they permitted us to discharge our stormwater and drain into their ponds. And then in the future, if there's issues or maintenance associated with it, we set financial thresholds on cost participation, and then also designated how we would determine who's responsible for what percentage of the repairs. And in general, this, it gives us easement to maintain our outlet pipe, but then the school also has a, has a way that they know that we'll be able to help them out in the future. So worked out really well. I want to thank the school district for the great work and being very reasonable, good to work on this, so. I would recommend approval of that agreement.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Kip.
Second.
Second by Vance. Cooperative agreement with the school district there.
Good to cooperate like that, it saves us money in the future, and I'm glad you got all the percentages laid out in advance.
Let's try to make it clear.
It ain't going to be perfect, but at least you got some parameters, so when the future repairs come up, you can deal with it.
That's, it's looking pretty good out there, too. All right, all those in favor of the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Postcurious.
All right.
Take care of the action items.
Yes, I'll give you guys some project updates, and then we can move on to dam discussion. County State Highway 40 Bridge Replacement, that's M&amp;K Construction out of Walnut Grove. They are right now allowing the bridge deck to cure, that was poured last Friday, so that project's moving along nicely. The railing will follow, and then the site grading, so I believe that project is scheduled to be reopened mid-August or so. So that's moving right along, and that's down in the southwest corner of the county, on the western leg of County State Highway 40. The bridge replacement on County Road 169, northeast of Mapleton. That bridge is a little bit farther ahead, that was the first one that we let, so the bridge deck has been poured, the railing was just poured as well last week. So they're both curing, still trying to achieve that desired strength before we can open. And the contractor has anticipated to begin working on the approach grading. That one's in quite a bit of a sag, so we're anticipating a little bit more earthwork that'll have to happen to tie the road into it. But the contractor's going to begin that. That one's moving right along, we would anticipate that one to be open by mid-July or so.
Wow, that's good.
And the third bridge that we have on our list is County Road 151. Tree clearing has been completed. So 169 was also Minowa construction, and on County Road 151, again, being farther southwest, M&amp;K got that one as well. So as soon as they're kind of done working on 40, they're going to jump on to 151 and begin the bridge work. That one's a little bit later in the season, that was the third one that we bid out, a little later start to it. We did that strategically so that Mike would be able to bounce around the bridges and not have, we've had four bridges going at once, I wouldn't highly recommend it ever again, so it's, it's in addition to managing another entire construction project, so he's able to kind of cover those bridges as, as is needed, and we can find staff to help fill in on other duties. So three nice sized bridges out in the rural parts of Blue Earth County under construction. In addition to that, we've got Batumus overlays completed, and I, I didn't grab my printout, I had gone and typed up all the roads, but I know we've got 27, 48 completed entirely, as well as, blank on it, 14, the segment south of Minnesota Highway 30, Highway 83. And then in addition to that, five has been paved, and it still needs striping. They're beginning paving on County Road 41 today, and they'll have a couple of other roads to complete yet, so. It's moving along, it's only early June, and we're already well over half done, so we like to get our overlays out early, get them done, and open up staff so that they can help with construction workload the rest of the year. So it's, it's kind of a big surge at the front, but we like to get it out of the way also because the contractors tend to have more capacity now for this type of work, and at the end of the year, they're paving those reconstruction projects and trying to get those done before winter. County State Highway 1 from 9 to 90, there's a lot of work going on out there. The contractor has the entire road bed covered with select granular, which is a sand, sandy fill product, so we use that at the very bottom of the road. So that's, that's a great milestone to have achieved, because that means if it rains, we've still got a construction platform on top. So Traxlers are supposed to be in this week to install the road drain tile, and then following that, the aggregate base class 5 will be going down, and we're anticipating curb and paving on the segment from the Tressel Bridge to the north to take place later this month.
Wow.
So moving right along, GSI is still out there working on the soil nail shot created walls, and that's progressing there on Wall C, which is, if you think of it as kind of like the Santiago's House around that corner. So they've, they've gotten the walls farther to the south completed, and now they're working on, they're, they're completed from a structural standpoint, now they're working on Wall C. I think they've got one more smaller wall to go yet. So they're making progress, Wall C was a very large wall. In addition to that, Boulderscapes is the company that's coming in, and I'm going to blank where they are out of, but they are traveling quite a distance. And if you remember, for those soil nail walls, we initially had designed where we would actually have pre-stressed tip-up concrete panels that would be a fascia, and the contractor proposed a value engineering alternative where they'd bring in Boulderscapes and they'd actually shotcrete the face, and then they actually do an architectural finish, and they do it similar to a zoo facade, where you go in and the lions and the tigers have the rock walls and outlines, and they'll actually stain the concrete, they'll actually carve the concrete to look like quarried limestone block. So it'll be really neat to watch, I think. I'm kind of excited to see how it turns out. They sent us some samples and showed us their portfolio of work, so they certainly have experience, and it was a better value alternative to, to try to do that. So there's a second facing of concrete that'll go on, and then it'll be carved, too.
So would be, maybe we'll have a shot at seeing it, seeing them start or doing it a little bit?
I would certainly think so. I can let you know if you want to go out and watch, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it won't be a fast process, but yeah.
I'll see how, what's our completion date on that?
Right now, I think we're targeting early fall, so probably mid-September or so is what we've got on the list.
That road's just been an amazing road to watch. I mean, it's, it's not just 15 miles a road. We, I mean, the, going through the hills and going through all the issues that we had with that road, I'm, it's just an amazing feat of engineering to watch that going on. So, and this last portion is no, no different than last year's and last few years. And it's just, it's going to be really fun to actually drive it when we get all done with this.
Absolutely. It'll be a very dramatic change, for sure, and a vast improvement, I think. I, I hadn't been out there for a while and went through last Friday and was somewhat astonished at even some of the elevation differences, and feeling now the curves moved out and things not as blind, the intersections are opening up, and it'll be a great safety improvement. So I appreciate the patience on this project. It's been a pretty significant undertaking with three stages and the amount of money that's had to go into it, but it was, it was equated to fixing up a little bit of a haunted house, almost it was it.
And I appreciate the fact the state's paying for it.
I, I do, too.
Just, we're all paying just indirectly.
Yeah, indirectly.
Different pocket.
Yeah. County State Highway 7 in Mapleton is under construction, progressing well, that's WW Blacktop. They're working on the segment from the school entrance to the north to Porchard Street, and putting storm sewer in right now. They've got the southern section brought to grade and then gravel on top, so the contractors for the school site are actually able to use that for access in and out of the site. So that progress, project's progressing well, they've got about 95% of the sidewalk in on the northern two blocks at the city park as well, so moving right along. And again, that one completion date is penned in for late August, so that we get that opened up before the school is ready to resume operations. 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, right now, the city is waiting on, on guidance from the state on how to proceed. Their bids came in over their estimate significantly, and they haven't received strong guidance to assist them, so they're not certain how they're going to proceed. I have a conference call with the city engineer scheduled for later this week to learn more about it, but we're in a holding pattern, we've been in a holding pattern on that project for years now, and it's, the city is in the driver's seat. I don't see any harm for the county in letting it sit aside. As a side note, the screening board, who makes decisions that are related to the state aid funding that we receive, and I'm a member actually of the screening board, actually of the chair, now, we did make a decision so that the city municipal construction account, you change so that you could carry up to a five-year balance of your city municipal construction money, because it's not a ton of money, it's about a half a million dollars a year that goes into that account, and to save up for a large project, having the ability to have five years of balance carried over without being penalized is, is helpful. So I think we've got some time to let the city work through their process on that project. However, I know we did talk, Commissioner Path and I, that if construction, which doesn't look likely to begin this year, get much accomplished, there may be some doubling up in impacts, especially in that vicinity, with us working on 13 next year and them potentially working on 10. So that region could have some considerable construction impacts and detours, and just as a, as a heads up, and it's unfortunate when that happens, especially when we've tried to plan these things out accordingly, and then the cards just don't fall quite right, so.
So it'll look like Eagle Lake did last year.
No comment.
Didn't that work?
It's too soon.
Use more time.
In that work.
It's too soon.
Use more time.
Cassa 11, moving on. Cassa 11 from 20 to 68. The tree clearing has been completed and we're going to be closing the road Monday to begin reconstruction. There'll be a press release going out, I believe, later this week. 12 from 26 to 2 by the airport, Minnesota paving. I'm sorry, RNE had the Cassa 11 project. Cassa 12 is Minnesota paving and materials. They also have a project at the airport that they're working on right now. So they haven't started County Road 12 because I think they want to finish up their critical work at the airport so that they don't put themselves in a bind with respect to access. Their intention is to start working on the north segment. So from the airport access road up to County State Highway 2, begin working on that when they start the project, which was actually Phase 2, how we had it laid out. Part of the reason they also want to do that is because there are no manhole structures. There's a considerable industry problem right now with concrete pipe and with concrete manholes to the point where contractors are trying to get plants outside of Minnesota certified and buy from Nebraska or wherever they can. It's a process. Box culverts, even if we wanted to do a box culvert project this year, if we didn't have an order in by February, we wouldn't get a box culvert this year. So it's a terrible industry problem we're having. A lot of projects are considerably delayed. But they're going to start the north piece. And then I think the intent is that the manhole or two that we have on the south piece would be constructed by then and we have it available for the southern segment.
But we're airport people are happy that at least we're proceeding, of course, after the work at the airport.
Yep, absolutely. And Cassa 16, we're still working on plans. Staff are working on those between construction support services, getting surveys imported and quantity measurements and things like that, set on files for our folks to use out in the field. Those are close to 60%. We're at a point where we should be able to start getting right away plaits and appraisal started and then continue planned production and begin negotiations on that project. Cassa 13 from 169 to 1, and the design is progressing well. SRF is pushing up to nearly 60% plans. So we've met with all of the high-impact landowners and had, I think, pretty good meetings. And in addition to that, we're going to be having a public open house meeting two weeks from today on the 4th, I'm sorry, the 21st of June from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the Public Works Department. So I believe you have been mailed or will be mailed a meeting invitation for that. In addition, SRF is also designing the bridge for that project. And, you know, it really should be a nice improvement, trying to fix a few key safety issues along with a new, larger, wider bridge. And then last design project we've got in the queue, big one is Cassa 26 from 57 of Minnesota Highway 22. We had the public open house meeting on the 24th, I believe, of May. Pretty poorly attended. There were a few homeowners and they weren't even, they were in the neighborhood just north. And they really came to kind of express concerns where there might be some springs that are seeping out of the hillsides and creating a lot of issues. So it helped us. We can address those issues potentially, put some tiles in as needed. Got some positive feedback about the trail going in. Tree impacts are always a concern, obviously, but not a tremendous turnout. But this time of year, it's tough to get people into a public open house meeting when it's nice outside. So we get that too. So with that, I'd like to, if there's any questions on the construction projects, maybe shift gears and walk through the memorandum I provided to the board regarding the Rapid End Dam update.
We're just looking forward to that immensely.
I'll try not to read it verbatim and just kind of cover it on a high level at least and at least offer an opportunity for discussion. So we've got the lease termination and transition service agreements executed. And on May 12, we hosted a virtual meeting with representatives from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And as you may remember, the FERC licensure exemption is in order granting the licensee, which would be currently Rapid End Hydro, the priority of controlled development and operation of the hydroelectric project under the terms of the exemption and protects the licensee from permit or license applicants that would seek to take or develop the project. I'm not sure how somebody could take or develop the project or be owning the dam. But it provides an exemption from Part 1 of the Federal Power Act, but it subjects you to the remaining code of federal regulations, Part 12, which does require routine monitoring and inspections. So the FERC was very helpful in providing guidance to the county on the licensure transfer process, including the next steps to be taken. Since then, we've sent a letter into the FERC requesting the license be transferred to us. And Rapid Hydro has sent a letter also stating they're surrendering it and transferring it to us. So it's critical to note, though, that the FERC gives licensees three years to get the hydroelectric project back up and running, or they can potentially consider it abandoned, resulting in licensure forfeiture. They also implied that forward progress could allow them to potentially extend the timeframe. However, they weren't committed to do that. Because technically, if you want to look at it, the project hasn't been operational since 2020. So we're already pushing a year and a half of it being non-operational. And they're understanding of that, but I don't think they're going to give us an infinite timeframe to get it returned to operation if we want to maintain the licensure. They provided guidance for us of necessary conditions and other agency coordination. So there's additional agency coordination required with the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office, the SHPO, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency in order to meet Federal Section 106 permitting requirements. And we've already initiated some of those conversations as we were developing the feasibility reports. However, we haven't had in-depth conversations about next steps, not knowing direction yet necessarily. The FERC noted that the county chooses to surrender the licensure exemption, we can do so with or without dam removal as an option. And we can enter into the FERC surrender process. This requires them to solicit for public comments and then make a determination if the proposed option is acceptable to them. That could include leaving the dam in place or removing the dam. So it, and that all ties into the Section 106. So if we were to determine that we want to surrender the FERC licensure, they have to go through the process. And it's not to say that they couldn't still make a determination that they will or won't let us surrender the license and/or that they would, will or won't let us leave the dam in place or mandate taking it out. So that was an interesting twist. So they've, there's quite a say there yet to determine, you know, them going through their process. Really didn't get an indication on how bad it will go.
So scenario this for me, so we decide we want to leave it there and not have it generate power. We turn that application in, they run it through their process, and then they tell us if we can do that or not, or?
That's my understanding.
All right. So if we decide to take it out, we have to ask, we got to get their permission. Basically, no matter what we, what decision we make, we got to get their permission. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
Interesting.
Aside from, the only option we wouldn't need their permission is to, and that one's to require approvals. I shouldn't say wouldn't need their permission. The one that would be the clearest path would be the return to hydroelectric production
Okay.
because we have the exemption in place in the facility.
We have that permit. We'd have to ask for an extension because we'll never get it done in the next year.
Right.
But we could ask for that extension. If we're moving forward with that, they would most likely let us make that decision on our own. But any other decision we make, they got to approve.
Correct.
Okay.
If we're going to, yeah, because all of those would most likely require the exemption termination process.
All right. So they're options. They just have to be approved.
Correct. And they have to go through a full, formal public process.
And then we do that all on NURAN? So that'd be different than everything we've done?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding.
Are they more inclined? I think lately they had too many dams that they approved to renew, I guess. I don't know.
You know, we didn't go down that path. I really can't say. I know digging through the files, I think it was the DNR. I shouldn't, I can't say with 100% certainty, but I think in the mid-'70s, when the county was going through this the first time as we took ownership of the dam, there was an ultimatum of either return it to operation or remove it. And the county obviously elected to return to operation, which was, you know, successful in the early '80s.
So we also have a DNR permit, right? But letters, C here talks about coordination, but DNR isn't listed as any of that.
Yep, I got that later in the, yep, you're spot on. In my outstanding tasks, I do still need to get in touch, the, I'm sorry, action item. The county needs to get in touch with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to discuss their operating permit that we have and transferring that from Rapid End Hydro to the county. And that authorizes us to operate the facility, including impounding river flows with minimum operational criteria. So flow rates have to be.
So that's pretty much just run a river more than anything to do with hydro as far as maintenance and inspection?
Correct. Yep. The maintenance and inspection and safety monitoring all falls under the FERC right now. But I need to determine if the FERC licensure is terminated, what is then the DNR's expectations for dam safety and things like that. It may fall to them and the permit may change completely.
But it wouldn't fall to anybody else. It wouldn't be in place of FERC as far as infrastructure safety?
My understanding is that it would go to the DNR. But again, that goes to needing to do additional, you know, there's so many kind of nodes of this thing to chase of talking with all of the different agencies, including Fish and Wildlife, MPCA, and DNR. Yeah, that's a great question. So I'll keep kind of working through this. The FERC noted it's critical that we continue to do dam safety surveillance monitoring. Attainer gates repairs were discussed. They understand the county's desire to delay the attainer gate repairs. The attainer gates are quasi-operable. However, if there's a significant head of water pushing on the gates, there's not confidence that they're structurally adequate to hold back significant heavy flows. So if we had massive flows and we had to shut the dam down, there's not confidence that the gates would hold. They don't fully seal perfectly because of the damage that happened to them in 2019. So they understand the desire to determine a path forward before we stick considerable investment. I think the estimate was $400 some thousand dollars in attainer gate repairs. However, prolonged inaction will not be accepted by the FERC. So we will have to make a decision on that. They noted that we need to update our emergency action plan within 60 days. So I've asked BAR to provide a proposal for that. I see it's in my inbox. The county in Rapid End Hydro, so that's the end of the FERC call items. The county in Rapid End Hydro, we've each talked about that, submitted our termination letters or transfer letters. So in addition to that, on May 19, I spoke with Sarah Bymers from the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office, Environmental Review Program Manager. We discussed the condition of the dam. There was a 1999 letter from their office to Blue Earth County stating that the Rapid End Dam is potentially eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. No formal action was ever taken after that letter was issued to determine if the dam should be listed. So it's kind of just, with that letter's just been floating out in space for 23 years, noting that it's potentially eligible, but it was never determined if it was actually eligible because it was just kind of all, as long as we were preserving the dam, kind of kicked down the road. So she said, a point in this is that if we were to pursue removal or any other option that would significantly impact the structure of the dam, potentially even the return to hydro with a major repair on the Downstream apron, we would have to do a formal historic register eligibility determination to complete before any significant structural modifications can be made to the dam or removal could be pursued. That would require consulting and engineering assistance. There's quite a bit of historical research that would need to be completed on that. If the dam were to be listed on the historic register following the determination process and the removal option was desired and agreed to by SHPO, the county would need to perform mitigation measures, including but not limited to photo documentation, plan documents, public information and education such as maybe interpretive signboards, things like that, and registering information with the state historic office and the preservation, I'm sorry, and the Blue Earth County Historical Society. She's, you know, we did have a good conversation because I think we all know our history with SHPO and historic bridges. And we have a very hard time doing anything with historic bridges. Dams are a little bit of a different animal. I think they understand that dams pose not only risk to public safety if it were to fail, but also an environmental risk. And they also understand that the DNR is heavily advocating for removal of dams. So with that, she said that there's, it's a different feel and approach than it is with, than it is with bridges. So there may be some hope there if that were the option that were to be pursued. And again, Federal Section 106 permit review would include archaeological assessment. The historic determination would all need to be completed if removal were desired. One additional item for discussion or another item for discussion is Rapid End Hydro inquired if the county is interested in acquiring their existing power purchase agreement, PPA with Excel Energy. Effectively, the PPA documents how market prices are set, factoring in a bunch of verbiage that I'm not going to read through because it's in there. But it takes in the, kind of the different players and factors within the market to set rates. And it sets the purchase agreement. And Bob and I both reviewed this agreement. I asked, actually asked them for permission included in the board packet. They never received approval. They never said no, but they never said yes. But I never got a response.
Is that why legal counsel's leaving the room?
It's, in my opinion, this expires in January of 2025. It's unlikely that the dam would return to operation prior to the agreement end date, nor does the county desire to operate the dam in the future. And it's uncertain if this agreement would provide any real benefit to a potential dam operator because they may want to be able to negotiate their own. They'd be contractually obligated to it anyway. And they'd want to negotiate their own PPA. And they would have the expertise to do so for competitive sale of hydroelectricity. So I guess I'm bringing it forward from a discussion standpoint. Is this something the board would like to pursue any farther of acquiring the PPA? Or would you be comfortable with me telling Excel that we're not interested at this point, given where the dam is at, where we at in our decision-making process?
I certainly don't have a problem with that because I think I just heard you say we're not going to operate it. We're going to contract it out to someone else. Right? So we don't ever have any intentions of operating it, you know, unless you want to leave it open in case that changes because things change. But what you're describing to me makes sense, just to let it lapse.
And if we continue to contract with somebody else and we're not the ones that want to operate it, we're really kind of limiting
Their.
their options. It might be less advantageous to us as a county as we look at other folks. I would support that as well.
Good.
I think so.
I will let Rapid End Hydro know that. Thank you. We have assumed, I'm sorry, we did do the public meetings at the Lake Crystal Cruise Inn on May 19 and then June 2 at the Moondogs baseball game. And we'll have a couple more items. I think it's either Thursday night we're in Lake Crystal. No, Wednesday we're in Lake Crystal.
Wednesday.
Thursday night we have a
Tomorrow night, virtual.
Yeah, tomorrow night in Lake Crystal. And then we have a Zoom on Thursday.
Thursday. And song's on the lawn. It's the Thursday as well.
The afternoon.
Yeah, so.
So three this week.
I need to get my calendar out to keep them all straight. There's a lot going on. We've hired a former Rapid End Hydro part-time employee to serve as the temporary part-time employee through us through an express service, who'll be responsible for routine checks and monitoring at the dam as well as routine maintenance, which will be assisted by our Public Works Department staff. Some tools and personal protective equipment were purchased to help him out. And county staff have installed the safety buoys upstream of the dam as well as some signs in the boat launch in Garden City and then upstream in the floodplain to advise people of the dam. And because those buoys can be damaged pretty easily by a log going down the river. So they're kind of a constant maintenance headache, but we have to have them out upstream of the dam or upstream. I think we had intended to try to put them upstream of the bridge even if we could. So that's going to be an ongoing maintenance issue. So additional regulatory agency coordination, I think we touched on all of that already. The DNR, the county will follow up with Fish and Wildlife Service as well as the PCA. Again, at some point, the DNR's the most critical path. Outstanding tasks. In order to maintain the licensure exemption for very long, we're going to need a lot of help from consultant engineering firms, specialized contractors, and potentially, you know, right now, we're getting by with additional part-time staff that's through temp service. I don't know how long that'll continue to be viable. I'm hoping at least for the foreseeable future. But if not, then we would probably be having to talk about additional staffing. Because right now, our crews just aren't equipped in such a specialized knowledge base to maintain that licensure. So to meet those monitoring, reporting, and maintenance responsibilities. In addition to that, we have to update the EAP within 60 days of the change of personnel, which was May 14. We need to have recurring surveillance and monitoring tasks. And also on the February 9, I know you've seen on the last page of this, the spreadsheet that outlines all of the tasks that are necessary. But conducting sediment spillway floodgate operation certification, filing the dam surveillance safety surveillance, safety, and monitoring report, that's going to be an expensive report to do regularly. Conduct and document annual dam safety inspections. That's, that's quite a cumbersome process. I don't know if any of the commissioners, I know Commissioner Purvis had previously sat in on, I think it's a full day at the dam of inspection, and it's hours and hours and hours of prep time leading up to it. A very thorough inspection of the dam every year with the FERC, with the consultant engineers who lead the effort. Measure and record pismeter and water levels. Those are quarterly. Crack gauge data, again, quarterly. Conduct tailwater soundings, that's annually. Then that's the county, requires the county to actually send somebody out in a John boat, try to shut the dam off, which we can't fully do. Go out in a John boat and do a topographic survey of the downstream apron. We've been doing that. It's challenging for staff. We didn't even really get a good chance to do it last year, so we missed on it. And I know they won't let us get by two years without doing it, and nor do I want to go another year without doing it. There's actually an alignment monument, movement survey that has to be completed. I believe that was moved, yeah, to annual. It used to be monthly. Instrumentation data review. But then we get into a lot of one-time tasks that, that require just changes or repairs to the structure of the dam. Extending the weeples in the Amberson floor slabs above the tailwater, adding energy dissipation in the spillway. And again, that was what we talked about, the baffle blocks downstream. And augmenting the crack monitoring program. We're seeing cracks, and we just started monitoring them about a year to a year and a half ago. So we need more data to determine if the dam is moving and if cracks are growing considerably, if it's just more freeze thaw movement. Revise the dam's safety surveillance monitoring plan in accordance with part, with the fourth part of Part 12D recommendations. You know, a lot of these start to become due the end of 2023. They're one-time tasks or they'll be on a probably a four to five year cycle. Crack repairs, a lot of these items, again, have that 2023 deadline. Complete the long-term maintenance repairs listed, file supporting technical. There's a lot of just reporting that has to happen, and it's reporting that I'm not fit to do, nor is our staff. That has to be done by people with dam structural knowledge. So it requires assistance from BAR or another firm of their magnitude. And then the last, but certainly not least, repair the tainer gates prior to returning to service. So this is a pretty comprehensive list. This was put together by Eagle Creek, Rapid and Hydro, to assist us as we were looking at the transition process. But there's a lot of looming deadlines with the dam that'll require a lot of help and a lot, a lot of financial resources. So that concludes my summary of that memorandum. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just, I appreciate your time. Let me walk you, walk through it here and discuss those items.
It's a very important document. Mr. Chair, I just do want to back, back up to the conversation you had with Sarah on number four, you know, the item about the historic eligibility determination. And if you can't answer this, that's fine. We can get the experts to talk about it. But so when do we start that process? Because to me, that sounds like it's a Trump. I mean, it's if, if they say, no, it's, you can't do anything with it.
Right.
We're done.
That, that's a great question. And I think even Bob and I have had that same conversation. When do we start this process? We, we could start it soon and, and get somebody going on it. If we're not going to immediate, I mean, eventually it's going to be a critical path we have done regardless, unless we return to service. But even that, the downstream apron revisions may or may not trigger this review. I certainly could get it going and ask BAR to start, start the work. I was, in my mind, I was somewhat going to wait until the county board made an official decision on which direction we wanted to go because it may help, help clarify and provide better focus on.
That would make sense to me, especially when you say, you know, that they are, they are, they're weighing other things on this decision as far as historic. I mean, there is way more things than an old house or an old bridge. There's more moving parts on this one. So that, you know, all weighs in. So that makes sense to me to wait till we kind of have a decision. But, and at the end of the day, this isn't a one-year, two-year, three-year. This is a, at the end of the day, this is going to be a 15-year project. By the time this, by the time we get this totally done, it's going to be 15 years. So it's not like we have to operate.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I would just point out that we do have some planned discussion at next week's work session as well in terms of some of the public input and, you know, just where do we go from here now that we're getting some of that input? So I think this information along with that information maybe can help the board kind of give the staff some direction on where do we go from here? Because I think we are getting to that point where we're going to need to figure out what those next steps look like.
And how much time do we have scheduled for this discussion for next week?
I think we're about 45 minutes.
Okay. And who do we have coming to the table?
Bolton and Mink will be there.
All right.
Thank you, Kim.
Well, yeah, a lot of moving parts. Seems like every time we have a discussion, we find one more thing that we got to try to deal with. But, you know, it is what it is. But.
Yes, there's been a lot of discovery this month, and I, you know, continue trying to track down and provide you these types of updates to document it because there's just been so much going on. It's hard to verbally express it all without getting it writing. And I hope the format works for you. I try to be relatively concise with it, not too wordy and try to keep it brief, but to the point.
I like the format.
No, it's a good format.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ryan. Have a good rest of the day.
You too.
Don't always think about dams right now.
It's hard not to.
Tell your people to be safe out there.
All right. We want to continue. We need a break.
Um, don't matter. We got plenty of time. Take ten.
Let's take a break.
Take a break.
We'll, we'll take a break. Get ready for commit the county attorney after you. All right, let's take five minutes.
Where do you need another cup of coffee?
I should, I forget we're on camera.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. The report speaks for itself as always. And if you have any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer them for you. Just a handful of things that I would bring to your attention. It was back in October, we started the Seal My Record program. So far, we've had well over 200 requests, which some of it have multiple files. So that has been a pretty good response. Truancy, we're coming to the end of the school year, obviously, but we still have some, some kids that'll be on truancy throughout the summer and hopefully making up some time for classes. And again, that is the, truancy is the leading indicator to future criminal behavior. And about 75, 76% of individuals in prison do not have a high school, excuse me, diploma. So that's one, why we kind of push in that area to make sure so they're productive members of society. Because a person with a high school education will make at least $1.2 million in his or her lifetime and not be susceptible to be on government assistance. So what I tell people is if you want to take a 20% tax rate or the true Minnesota millionaire tax rate of 45%, that's the amount of money by having one kid graduate that we've made, saved, made society that much in, in tax money. But on top of that, we've, in the past, we've evaluated our specialty courts, and I'm going to have Dr. Barb Carson, retired professor from MSU, come in and evaluate our truancy program. She just finished evaluating the one in a different county. And I mean, we'll be reaching out to the school districts in the area to make sure that they're on board so we can have adequate information because I do think it's an important topic. So with that said, I'll let you get back. If you have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for that report, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. All right. I think we have pool of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, the first item is the county board minutes for May 24th.
I'll move the minutes.
Kim moves the minutes. Second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries?
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Second.
By Kevin, second by Vance to approve the payment of the bills. All those in favor, anybody got a question on nothing, anything? All right. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 11 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have just informational items for the board today. We have filled a couple of positions, one a program coordinator in the WIC and Family Programs area of Public Health, and then also a maintenance technician, one in our Public Works Department. We also had a couple of promotions, one to a financial assistance case aide, or from a financial assistance case aide to a child support enforcement specialist, and then also a clerical specialist, two to a child enforcement specialist. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill those two positions. We also had a promotion of a correctional officer to a legal assistant and have initiated recruitment to fill that position. And then we had a couple of resignations. One is a county attorney division chief, and then the second being a transport officer. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that transport officer. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those items.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Board? Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All I got. Okay. All right. I guess at this point, okay, who wants to go first on their reports?
I can start, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to. After our last board meeting, Kevin and I and some planning and zoning staff and Bob met just to talk about some issues that we have out in the rural area with some planning and zoning stuff. Had my EMS meeting. We meet every other month. Scott, Mark, and the staff are doing a good job there. We didn't have nothing really new to report. They've been doing a lot of trainings and moving a lot of car seats throughout the last few months. They've had a lot of day clinics and show people how to install car seats and give car seats away. So it's a really good program that they got a grant for. Had several Memorial Day services out at Kern Cemetery in Eagle Lake, and then went up to Legion for a lunch. And it was a nice, nice little lunch they have up there. I haven't done that before because as you go out to the Vietnam Memorial, but I stayed in town that day. And then we were at department head, got an update from Bob, planning and zoning. We had just a couple items from the county, some new ordinance revisions. So we'll be seeing those next month. They were both uncontested and good discussion on them. And then Friday morning, we were at a bluff stabilization workshop that they held over in the Government Center. And Kim Musser from MSU, I think is kind of who arranged it and put it together, but Scott Salisbury was there and did a great job presenting. Mike Maurer was there talking about the houses that we have purchased in the past and the challenges we have with the stabilization of the banks on the rivers. And had a good discussion. I learned a lot. But it's a big undertaking and good to see the staff working forward on that. And then yesterday I had an MRCI meeting in the afternoon, and things are going really well there. They had a record eight people start yesterday, all the way from some, some of the drivers for the vans to a human resources person.
Wow.
Yeah. They, they were pretty excited about that. Couple grants coming through. So we got some more money coming in, and they're getting more and more of the vans out there, which is very exciting since we don't have any more.
Great they can find the staff.
Yeah, we don't have any in-house stuff. So those vans is what they're doing is they're, they're basically splitting everybody up and then they're doing different things out in the community. So it's a, all those consumers come into one spot. We get van drivers, there's three or four people in a van, and they get to get out into the community and do things and participate. And that brings me up to today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kim. Kevin? All right. Again, since the May 24th board meeting, the PR update, department heads, and the near channel workshop have already been mentioned. In addition to that, at the canvassing meeting on May 25th, I attended that. We had our sewer, one watershed, one plan meeting on the 27th, Policy Committee, attended Region Nine Board Meeting on June 1st. On June 2nd, as an anniversary gift to my wife, we went to the Moondogs game and talked Rapid and Dam for an hour and a half, participated in that, appreciated staff's help in putting that together. We got a lot of good public input at the, at the Moondogs baseball game. Conversations of pretty much a lot of ditch issues, certainly Rapid and Dam, as well as MFS issues with, with some of their concerns. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kevin. Vance?
Well, I'm going to go all the way back to May 3rd, which was the last board meeting that I attended. That afternoon, I had a NACO monthly membership meeting on the 4th. I had a towards zero death speed messaging meeting. Then we had a department head meeting that day. We had a Blue Earth, Niklet County, TDS, not TDS, TZD meeting. And then on the next day, on the 5th, we had a South Central TZD meeting. And go up to May 9th, I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund meeting, and then a detox meeting in the afternoon in New Ulm. Actually, it was our first get-together since COVID. We, we actually met, met at the New Ulm Detox, and, and that was actually kind of nice, not to actually see the people instead of having to go through Zoom. On the 11th, I had a Community Corrections Meeting and a Blue Earth Niklet County Safe Roads Meeting. And then that evening, I had a farm advisory meeting for the community farm. On the 12th, I had a finance and budget meeting for TDS. And then that evening, we had our mayors and clerks at the American Legion in Eagle Lake. On Monday, the 16th, I had NACO Arts and Culture Commission meeting. And on the 17th, we had our work session. And that afternoon, my wife and I flew to Alaska for the WIR, the Western Interstate Region for NACO and for the Rural Action Caucus, which I'm vice chair of, in NACO. What I can tell you about that, there was a lot of things included with that. It was a three-day event, the 18th, 19th, and 20th. But the WIR accepted Minnesota into the WIR. And since there was, there's so much that Minnesota has in, in connection with the Western states, that it's a three, three-year temporary agreement that I don't think we have voting rights, but we, we get to show up and after three years, they can put us in there permanently. If, and also it's up to Minnesota whether it wants to stay in. So. Get to the 24th, we had our current county board meeting. On the 25th, I had, of course, I missed those. Didn't I? Yeah, I missed those. On Monday, Memorial Day on the 30th, I, I was down and I met with Mark down at the Vietnam Vets for Memorial Day. Department Head Meeting on the 1st, South Central Steering Committee Meeting for Towards Zero Death. And I think that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Vance. Good on your trip to Alaska?
It, I tell you what, Mary and I took an extra time and toured Alaska, and I would recommend it to absolutely anybody. It was amazing.
That's neat. That's neat. All right. Let's see, I had, let's see, after the meeting, let's see, 25th, did have the, Kevin and I did have the canvas on the election, the primary election. And then on the 28th, I did have a Partners for Forable Housing Meeting and found out, I don't know who all gets the Partners Forable Housing Newsletter, but I'm in the centerfold. Not what you think. Looks like I'm, my wife says, it looks like you're worn out because of riding a bike.
What do you think?
After the bike.
That was how it was put to me.
All right.
Okay. And then, and then we did have the department heads on the 1st, and did have Maple Policy Committee Meeting on Thursday that week, and. Maple Policy Committee meeting on Thursday that week, and that was, we did pass our year, upcoming year of projects and, or plans, so it's going well there. And I think, I didn't forget anything. I think that's about it. All right. Appreciate everybody's activities. And with that.
I would move to recess.
Recession. All right.
Second.
Move to recess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. We are in recess.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.